Welcome to the work session for the month of February. If you'd all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Since I am in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. This is our work session, so this is not the open session. We don't take public comment. We're trying to get business down, get ready for next week. We've got several presentations. I'm going to ask Michael Glacken of INR. And I don't see John. It's big now here, but John.
John's traveling back.
Traveling. So we'll have the financial presentation go first because we pay you guys to be here, so we'll get you on and off the clock real fast. Amy, you want to introduce?
Introduce. This is Vic from TADA. He is pinshitting for John this evening.
Thanks. Thanks for having me tonight. I believe everyone has a handout for portfolio performance for the police and non-uniform pension plans. What I'll try to do here is just cover the portfolio performance for the police plan first and a lot of commonalities across police and non-uniform plans. So I won't hit too many details on the non-uniform plan, but if you take a look on the police plan, top line performance, really strong for the quarter as well as year-to-date period. So for the fourth quarter of 2017, 3.72% ahead of the benchmark of 3.5%. I will see 2017's year return, 15.11% when we aggregate both portfolios, ahead of the benchmark of 14.59%. Then, as we take a look at the five-year number, the goal of the 8%, exceeding the 8% discount rate, 8.41% return in absolute terms. As we take a look at performance for PFM specifically, for the quarter, 3.83% return ahead of the benchmark, once again, at 3.5%. For the year, 15.65% while ahead of the benchmark there, 14.59%. So in excess of about 100 basis points in performance for the year. When we take a look to see what drove performance for the year, you know, the markets in aggregate were strong across the board, domestic equity, international equity, as well as fixed income. Our asset allocation decisions really did drive most of that performance. We were marginally overweight domestic equities and international equities for most of the year. We made some additional changes through the course of the year that did help. We do have an overweight to corporate bonds in the fixed income portfolio that did add some additional performance in fixed income. But overall, strong performance for the portfolio as it relates to the police plan. Moving on to the non-uniform plan on the following handout. Once again, as I mentioned, some similar performance given the same exact portfolio lineup and similar asset allocation decisions through the course of the year. 3.72% for the quarter ahead of the benchmark, once again, 3.5%. And 2017 performance, 15.17% for the year of 2017. And then the five-year period, once again, 8.41% in excess of that 8% hurdle. Once again, PFM performance, well in excess of the benchmark, 3.81% for the quarter, 15.64% for the year-to-date period. The allocation decisions that we made in the police plan through the course of the year, same decisions were made in the non-uniform plan as well.
Thank you. I'm Mike Glacken with INR Advisors. We've been fortunate to be using an all-market index approach, investing mainly in indexes through Vanguard since 2008 with the township. So I'm going to go over the performance allocation and attributes for the INR portion. The allocation is identical for both the police and non-uniform mix. We were given the charge of using a 60% equity, 40% fixed income allocation strategy from PFM. So in the one year above benchmark of 15.07 and above the benchmark for the last quarter as well, since inception up 6.11% versus the benchmark. As I said, we were brought in right at the market high of 2008 when the market went down considerably. So using an all-passive index approach, you've been above benchmark performance by two points since our inception. Some of the things that drove the performance for 2017, a few of the things that we do when the program is so efficient that the end of 2016, large-cap value stocks were the winning asset class. So international stocks and large-cap growth stocks were the losing asset classes. So to keep the model in check, what we actually do, which is counterintuitive to what your retail investors do, we sold the large-cap value while it was up and pushed it back into international growth when they were in, and they were the two winning asset classes. So how you were able to beat the benchmark using the benchmark and the indexes and also pay for the expenses in the funds and our fees were twofold. One, rebalancing because now the market is so efficient that you can actually be investment shopper gurus in essence by rebalancing, keep the models in check. We also did overweight corporate bonds as PFM did as well. So you had overperformance on both the stock side and the bond side, which is 75% of the time you can't beat the benchmark, and you were fortunate to beat the benchmark since our inception. So we're thrilled with where things are. Obviously, things have been a little bit volatile lately, but overall, what we're reminding all of our clients every single quarter is that you typically see an intra-year correction of about 14%, believe it or not, but 70% of the time the market still ends up being positive. We didn't get one last year, really, and the last time that we got one was when we came in here in February of 2016, when January is one of the worst Januaries of all time, and we're telling you to hang in there, we were going to rebalance and actually buy more stocks while they were down. That's why the program is just so efficient and just keeps working on both parts. So we're happy with where we are, above benchmark performance, and you guys are doing exactly what's been laid out in the investment policy as well as in the reports coming from the AG's office and press releases and the Governor Wolf's task force. The program that you're following is laid out exactly the way the recent Governor's task force said that you should be managing police pension and non-uniform pension plans. So we greatly appreciate the opportunity. Any questions?
Yeah, so 60% equity, 40% fixed income, is that the right mix? I mean, would you do it? I assume that's our investment policy that you're following? And would you do it differently? Does that make sense?
Well, it's a great question because that's what drives 90% of your return is the allocation mix.
Right.
So the way I would answer that is our projections show that it's going to be very difficult to hit an 8% assumed interest rate using a 60% mix. So you really have to look at three different things then. You either have to start to budget as your MMO is going to steadily increase, or it's either you pay now or you pay later. So you either start to have conversations with the actuary about lowering the assumed interest rate or changing the asset allocation or both. So then these are conversations that you have been engaged in and will continue to be engaged in, but we think it's going to be very, very difficult in today's environment, especially when the market ran up by, you know, 15% return. When you look at our projections for next year, it's going to be more difficult to get that same return from the stock market.
Sure.
So your question is really worth 90% of the test rate. We think it's going to be more difficult to hit your 8% assumed interest rate with a 60-40, well, higher than 8% assumed interest rate using a 60-40 mix.
So what are other municipalities doing? Are they doing anything?
They're starting to take a look with new Gatsby 67 and 68 where pension plans are becoming more transparent, and you're supposed to state whether or not you think there's a likelihood of hitting your assumed interest rate over time. Townships are doing a little bit of both. They're budgeting to put more money in as you go along in the MMO, knowing that there's not a real strong likelihood that they're going to hit it, and they're also trying to slowly knock down that assumed interest rate that's being used by your actuary. And they're also, some of them are actually becoming slightly more aggressive because of the higher assumed interest rate.
On the equity side?
Yeah, yeah, because if you take a look, in order, we still expect stocks to do better than bonds, especially in a rising interest rate marketplace. So given that, you're going to have to take on more risk, more volatility, but leaning more towards stocks based on the research would say that you have a greater likelihood of hitting the assumed interest rate. But that's got to be an agreement with, one, the board and the actuary first, and then we come in when we're given the charge of, okay, this is the risk level. And both us and PFM can work together and say, hey, you know, we only expect a 6.5% return from a 60-40 mix, and here's the differences in the risk. So that's something that can be talked about.
So you can give us a recommendation?
Jointly with PFM, we could talk about it and circle back.
I think it'd be helpful.
Because there's interaction too, you know, whether or not you want to lower the assumed interest rate and that kind of thing.
Okay.
What we can do--
You've got to go to Mike because it works televised.
Yeah, so what we can do, you know, in this scenario, because it's a very, it's a very common question that's being asked right now. You have an assumed interest rate of 8%, you couple that with, you know, to what Mike had mentioned, where equity markets have gone, you know, so what are we expecting now, five years out and even longer term, 30 years out? And so a lot of municipalities are asking this question, and what we have done and what we can do is run an asset allocation study and take into consideration, you know, a recent actuarial evaluation, take into consideration outflows, cash flows, et cetera, and really come to, you know, a good idea of what the portfolio can return for both an intermediate timeframe, five years, as well as a long-term timeframe.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Yeah, one quick question. So correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying that what's going on now in the stock market is how long, this downturn? Which can affect, I mean, you talk about taking risk, but this looks like, to me, a huge correction for, because the feds are going to raise the interest rates at least three or four times. So we may be looking at, what, six months of this, or is it going, in your opinion, level off?
So you want me to, I guess?
Anybody can add, okay.
Yeah, so the general thought about what's happened over the last two days, or, you know, Friday and Monday, is at PFM, what we've expected is that the market is due for some sort of--
Absolutely.
Correction is not maybe a bit more of an aggressive word, but you take a look at November of 2016, since then, the markets have just been going in one direction, despite you think about all of the risks going on in the world, whether it's geopolitical risk, political uncertainty with the UK, political uncertainty just in Europe in general. So everything's been going up in one direction, but you have to think about that then in the context of all good that's going on. So you think about economic fundamentals here domestically, GDP growth of 3%, strong corporate earnings, full employment. So when we look at the foundation of what's going on here domestically, and even better than expected data coming out of Europe as well as Asia, this is the first time since the early 90s where we have experienced, and kind of this term that's being used is global synchronized growth, where all of the large regions of the world are kind of moving up in one direction. So that said, you know, what's happened the last couple of days has been more fear in the headlines of the fact that strong wage growth came out on Friday. So strong wage growth, then, you know, the expectation of inflation. Expectation of inflation, then, the Fed will raise, the fear is that the Fed will raise rates more than planned. You know, the Fed is very data-dependent, so the expectation that they would raise rates more than three times this year, given that they're data-dependent, is unlikely. But it's really more fear in the markets versus fundamentals. So fundamentals were off, that would be a different story.
So in your opinion, if it's not three or four times, with two, they'll raise it twice in this next year, interest rates?
Yeah, I mean, the, so the Fed is planning to raise rates three times this year?
Yeah, and they're talking about a possible fourth, right?
Well, the market is pricing--
Because of inflation.
Well, yes, the market was pricing it twice, actually. At the end of last year, the market was expecting two rate hikes. The Fed was expecting three. Now there's some concern that because of the strong wage growth, that inflation will pick up.
Right.
And perhaps the Fed could go a fourth time. But there's already a bit of a disconnect that the market was expecting two and the Fed was planning three. So it's more investor sentiment and concern versus fundamentals.
I think fundamentally, if you take a look, the market right now, there's not those same indicators that you would say, we're looking for, you know, a 20% hit to the marketplace. But that being said, as I said earlier, almost every single year, the market averages a 14% intra-year correction. Today, if you put it in relative terms, today was a 4% hit, all right? You should expect at some point, we might go down another 10%, and that's not something that should be unexpected, that's something that should be expected. But 70% of the time, the market will recover. And if you look at in past history, when you had a Fed chair change and midterm elections, the market has corrected in every instance historically by 10% or more, but in every one of those instances, the market has come back positive. But to be able to predict what it's going to do over one year, just to be fair to everybody, I'm going to sound a little bit like a weatherman here, but using a 60% mix, 60-40 mix, given that we expect somewhere around a little bit above 6% return from a 60-40 mix, there's a 95% confidence level that we could be somewhere between negative 8.73% and positive 26% when him and I walk out the door. So to give you a true prediction over one year, I don't mean to sound like, but that's the truth. That's the best I can do on giving you what we potentially expect. Now, we expect to get slightly above 6%. Now, if you stretch that out, like we said, your actuary is using a 30-year time horizon, you spread that out over 20 years, and you're looking at somewhere between 9% and 2%. So much more likelihood I'm going to be right over 20 years than the one year. But that's a necessary right now, given where interest rates are, and wage growth is really the best indicator of where interest rates are going to go. If you take a look at stocks today and compare it to what the risk-free rate of return is today, relatively speaking, if you say, okay, what's the difference? What am I getting rewarded for in stocks versus risk-free rate? It's better than it was in the 90s when you had double-digit expectations from stocks, but you had a higher risk-free rate of return, right? So it's kind of a, go back to your question, is really the key of everything, you know, what do we expect? We expect a lot less than your assumed interest rate. So there's got to be some interaction of what happens next, and that's already started. It's a great question. We're expecting more volatility to get less return.
Anyone else? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is, we have Representative Joe Blackburn and his vegetative management group from PICO. Talk to us about the trees and wires. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
How's everybody? I'm Joe Blackburn from PICO's External Affairs Manager for Delaware County. We were asked to come in tonight, address some questions regarding vegetation management and enhanced tree trimming matters going through the township. I have Ernie Schwartz with me. Ernie's with PICO's Vegetation Management. Be able to speak a little bit more in-depth with what is taking place and the parameters around how we trim and why we trim. Turnover, Ernie? How you doing?
Good.
Ernie Schwartz. If you have any questions, I guess I'll just give you a little synopsis of what we're doing, a summary. So the trimming that's happening in this area is part of a capital construction upgrade. This area, these circuits, the source of this is the Lanark area, and this is being upgraded from a 4KV to a 13KV. That's a good thing. So we're trying to improve our reliability and also help our customers out, give you some stronger power. And so what's happening here is that the capital construction work is being trimmed, and they considered that an enhanced trimming. Again, what I want to say, you know, so we only trim, so this work is, that's part of the construction work, so they're going to clear those areas according to the standards that we would apply for distribution, utility line clearance. And the distribution, those standards are ANSI standards, the American National Institute standards. So that's what we apply for our trimming, and it varies based on the kilo hold. I don't want to dig too deep. So it's going to go to 13KV. So based on the vegetation that is in an area, that's, and we trim according to what we think the tree growth rate will be and what we trim. You probably see, you know, Aspen does a lot of the trimming for us in these areas, this type of trimming. They've also doing for the capital work, Aspen's doing that trimming. And that's capital work, and then we also come through pretty frequently, you see us with our distribution preventive maintenance trimming, and that's a five-year cycle. And then unfortunately, there's a mid-cycle we come through, and that's all based on us trying to maintain our reliability for our customers. This work, I spoke with the project managers on this job. I know the work that's pretty much getting close to done here, we should be done trimming and completing the capital upgrades hopefully into March, but I believe the majority of the vegetation work has been completed. I know we had some questions about it, and that's really where we're at. We're trying to improve our reliability for our customers. And, you know, you look some of the statistics with outages, and up to like 60% of the outages that occurred are a result of vegetation. So we're just trying to trim and keep the lights on for everybody. Do you have any questions about the trimming that's been going on?
Yeah, I mean, you keep saying trimming, and I understand that's what you're saying, but there's been a lot of trees in, however township, that have been taken down.
So they--
So do we have, I mean, is there, are there records kept as to the total number of trees taken down? And how is the decision made to not trim and take down a tree?
Well, it depends on the type of tree. It depends on, some of the scenarios you would look at is the overall health of the tree. Well, for example, like, we know the ash trees, those are all, every ash tree is going to die. So if we identify ash trees, we're trying to remove those. And also, it's based on the health of the tree and how much trimming is going to occur over the years. If we're going to come back repeatedly if it's a fast-growing tree. And also, like pine trees or trees, we don't want to top trees. We would like to just prune them and try to train them, keep them away from the wires, like through pruning, different techniques.
Is that something PICO goes through, or is that the subcontractor who then makes the decision?
The contractor does that trimming for us.
Who makes the decision as to whether it's trimmed or taken down?
Well, they would look at the tree, and they would just see if it's going to be a long-term investment in us to trim that every five years or to take those things down. And also, based on the construction, they do, you know, some ground-to-sky clearance that would be required to, or when we're trimming those, you know, certain areas.
I think the question though was, is PICO making that decision or is Aspen making that decision locally?
No, we're making that decision.
To remove it versus trinate?
So they're doing that work. So I don't know exactly what would be going on in those areas, but I know based on the upgrades that are occurring, the project managers, the teams look at what they're doing and deciding how much they need to clear before, you know, to make it safe for the workers and to, you know, install the new equipment.
And when you remove, are you coming back to remove the stump as well, or?
No, we do not grind stumps.
Who's keeping track of how many trees were taken down? Because my understanding is that PICO is going to either reimburse us for planting the trees at a later date, but who's keeping track of that? Is that the contractor, or again, is that you?
We would have that information. I have, there's people I work with that would track that information. We could give you a number. I'm not clear who's making the decision.
Do you actually replace trees, though? I didn't know that.
I am unaware of that.
So where are you getting that from, Kevin?
I'm a little surprised by that, but I don't know what deals were cut, you know?
I thought Larry indicated, at least in the Grassland Park area, that any trees that were taken down, there'd be reimbursement that we could plant another tree, because there was a series of old shade trees that were taken down.
I mean, if you're, so you're going to plant trees out of the wires, I think it would have to be, you know, there's certain trees that are just trees and--
No, I'm not saying they were, they're not going to be planted in the same place, but if you take down a tree on the township's property, we were told that we were going to be reimbursed to put in a new tree.
Yes, see, I have no knowledge of that.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead, Larry.
Mr. Schwartz, there were conversations, and before Mr. Blackburn came aboard, there was a gentleman from Chester County who was acting in the interim after Mr. Brown retired. And there were a number of trees that were removed in the second ward, I believe it was on Lanark Avenue Dock, and they were evergreen trees that were part of a required buffer to buffer the public storage facility and the residents across the street. And I recall that in that instance, there was a specific agreement to replace those trees with a slower growing or maybe something that--
Like an ornamental? Yeah, something that's not--
I don't believe in ornamental, because the purpose of the tree was to buffer dissimilar uses.
Is that by the storage?
It's directly behind, and I believe the trees were on the public storage property.
That is being done.
Okay.
Those trees will be replaced.
So we are aware of some instances, you know, isolated instances where there were tree replacements specifically accepted by PICO in exchange for the fact that they were removing required trees.
I believe those trees were required, something like a buffer. And again, I came kind of after the fact, but--
Correct.
But if you take down someone's tree on a private property, there's no, you don't remove the stump and you don't replace the tree, is that a PUC kind of, you're not required to do that under the PUC, I assume? Is that why--
Under the terms of the tariff.
Yeah.
They would follow the terms of the tariff. So there are a couple of things usually that we would come across, but we also, along with the areas that we're doing work, we have right-ofways, and if you read the terms of the right-ofways, you know, they're all, they're going to maintain the facilities.
Who's "they"?
PICO. We're going to maintain the overhead, the aerial lines and the facilities to the standards that we apply from the ANSI standards for utility clearance.
But is it the PUC that basically--
The PUC gives us more authority for our tariff, which then tells us we have the right to maintain our facilities.
To take trees down?
Yeah.
Do what is necessary to--
Yeah, as they deem necessary.
Do what they deem necessary?
Through that before.
And it's also the PUC, I assume, that doesn't require you to remove stumps or put in new trees either?
Right.
Is that correct?
Well, I think that's--
Or is that a company policy?
Without the deals, maybe it sounds like in the past when certain things--
But on private property, it's not, you're--
Right. I just know, you know, if we're working on a right-ofway or if we're working, you know, per the terms of the tariff, we're going to move stuff, you know, I know that this is the debate with--
Right.
Well, can I just ask, this happened several years ago with PICO, and back, it was probably 15 to 20 years ago, when Mr. Kapushin sat beside me in his ward, the eighth ward, and in my ward, the seventh ward on Brookline Boulevard, you came along with Aspen and PICO and just hatchet the trees down. I mean, you were topping them off, but at the same time, you were killing the trees. Now, in that agreement years ago, PICO did fund the money to replace all the trees that they had basically ruined because of the way they cut the trees. You can cut into them and then eventually they die. Then eventually, that leads Doc for the township to have to be responsible to take care of that tree because it's on the right-ofway there, and that's where we put the trees, and then we now have to cut those trees down and get rid of all that wood. And I don't think it's fair to the homeowner when you guys come along and do that, and then basically you tell them, well, that's your responsibility to get rid of this stump. Well, they didn't want the tree down. They may have wanted the tree topped, or PICO may have wanted the tree topped so it stays out of the lines, but they didn't want the tree down. I had a lady who had three trees in her backyard taken down, and she's very upset about it. And I've had other people tell me that they're coming on my property to take the trees down, which I don't think you really have a right to do, do you?
Well, under the terms of the tariff, we do maintain the facilities. We have our right to maintain our facilities, so.
That's under the PUC, right? When you say--
Yes, under the tariff, you have to the PUC, yeah.
The PUC.
And if you could go on PICO, if you go to www.pico.com, there is actually, on that webpage, is a copy of the tariff. Break down all the--
But, but I guess one of my major problems with this is when the people don't want the tree cut down, and you could just top the tree off and get the, the tree limbs out of the wires, and then you guys cut the tree down, and then you say to the homeowner, hey, you're responsible for getting that stump out of there. Why should they be responsible? They didn't want the tree down. You guys wanted it down.
Well, we removed the tree to maintain our facilities for the safety of the, of the equipment materials. So, and we all know, trees and power lines don't mix. That's the first, they just don't, that's historical, trees and power lines don't mix. So we're going to maintain them, we're going to apply our standards, and we're going to trim them off below the lines, probably just where the communication lines are.
But I guess another thing is, do you make the homeowners aware, when you're doing this work, that when you take these trees down, that they are responsible for the stumps?
For the stump, yes, we do. We actually have a form, we have forms that we distribute and we, an acknowledgement form is what we call that, we would give to the homeowners and let them know what we're going to do. And it provides options like, we will cut the wood, and we'll cut the wood into three-foot sections, we'll stack the wood. Or if the homeowner doesn't want the, the wood, we'll take the wood, you know, we'll make arrangements to remove the wood. Because there's different varieties that are provided. And we have copies, that's why when you ask about if we know how many trees we have, we do because we have all those, those line slips.
The most common complaint I receive is that PICO cuts trees and leaves them. And that there are, I've had, I would say probably, I would say a dozen constituents over the years who have, who have called PICO and the trees are just left in the backyard.
Okay, so what you're looking at is a different scenario. That is emergency work?
No.
No?
No.
Because a lot of the time, are you familiar with that? If they, if I said that would be emergency work, where we come and there's an outage, so they're going to cut away the trees and brush, like in someone's yard, let's say a tree falls on someone's triplex into the house. Those guys come, they're PICO employees, they don't have vegetation crews. So, you know, they may have a chainsaw, they'll cut those trees up and leave the wood in PICO's property because, I mean, they can't take the wood with them, and their mission is to get the power back on.
Is there somewhere where, you talked about the standards and determining whether a tree is trimmed or, or taken down? Is that available somewhere? Or is that an internal?
I think those are, like, the field, the work that's happened here, now, I haven't been a part of that, but I think that a lot of that was with the construction work because they were upgrading these circuits. They were making decisions on what, what trees they looked at and decided that they, they were good targets to remove, you know, permanent removals instead of maintaining them over the years.
So the contractors were making that decision?
No, well, we would ask the contractors, we have a couple contractors that do a couple things. We have Asplund that comes through, but we have another contractor that actually comes through that are certified arborists, and they go around, and they scope these trees out for us. And then they, they identify them and then they get them, get them signed up to remove. And that would be Dave.
Go ahead.
Well, who gets them signed up? At what point do the homeowners find out?
So there's Asplund, you see coming through kind of the contractor doing the work. We have another company, Dave Resources, who has arborists. They actually scope out, so we have the circuits where all the work is occurring. And they're riding these circuits out, they're actually going through, and they're identifying based on what we're trying to accomplish, target trees that are going to be suitable removals.
And who are they telling?
Then they're getting that information, and then they're going to visit with the homeowners and try and get those trees signed up.
I think that's the theme that's coming from a lot of the commissioners tonight, is that this seems to be in the process, a lot of homeowners who aren't getting this information, are getting surprised with trees that are cut down, or they hope the tree could be trimmed and it ends up being removed. And I, I don't think people have, I don't think people have even a modicum of knowledge of what PICO has the, the power to do, the ability to do, and, and whether or not they can push back at all or get any kind of, kind of cooperation.
That's what, in cases where, so you're getting to there and I do this a lot. So I ride around, I have people calling, so that, those are cases where it's better, if they're unhappy, there's, there's got to be, I don't know if they've been given, you know, so they've been given notifications that we're going to be trimming, there should be phone numbers on those notifications, a letter. Did your constituents receive letters from us indicating that we're trimming?
Some did, some didn't. Yeah, I mean, I think that's the issue. You, you keep talking about trimming, and the overwhelming majority of trees in the seventh ward, and I know in the second, and Mario's sick tonight, and in, in the Grassland Park area, were just removed. Like, they weren't trimmed. So if, if the presentation was made to a resident, I, I understand the authority you have under the Public Utility Commission. But I, my concern is that, given your, the presentation you made initially tonight in the presentation, as I assume these forms go out, talk about tree trimming, and it, you know, the possibility of the tree being removed is, is probably in small print on that letter, and then your subcontractors coming through and making the decision to remove all the trees.
I think if we would, when they're signing those up, I think it's pretty clear that our intentions is to remove the tree. If they don't want to, you know, if we, there's, unless we're more of us, so we're going to escalate it, you know? It's going to go, we're going to have the initial meetings, if people are unhappy, like I myself, I, I'll come meet with people. I'll come meet with these homeowners.
What's the result of that meeting with those people? Do you end up working out, you know, topping their tree or trimming their tree as opposed to cutting it down?
So I'm going to take a close look at it, and I'm going to see exactly how much needs done, needs to be completed. And so I'm going to meet with those people, and if we see it's suitable, if they're, they don't want the tree removed, and we, I, you know, I take a closer look at it, and I'm going to work with them, and so we're going to do some trimming of the tree. But we're probably going to have to trim the trees back, and then we're going to maintain those trees on a five-year cycle. That's probably what's going to happen. Ultimately, there's, there's going to be trimming.
What's coming, no, no, trimming is a perfectly fine word when it means trimming. The problem is it's Orwellian when people are told, we're, we're tree trimmers and we're not tree trimmers, we're tree cutters and removers.
But if we do identify, and I'm not going to say we're not going to do it, but it is clear that we have to remove a tree ultimately.
And I get that. And I'm not, I'm, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I think you've got a communication problem with, with our constituents. And I think folks, most folks are reasonable and can understand what's going on. What people hate is surprises. And I think a lot of, a lot of people have complained to us on this board about the surprises of a number, numbers of trees being cut down that they didn't expect. Maybe some of these homeowners did get the notice and just didn't pay attention to it or didn't think it was going to happen. But if this is, if you're upgrading equipment now, and this is the start of a lot of this happening through this township, we need to come up with a better way to communicate this with folks in advance. And what's clear in what you've just described in that if somebody complains to you and you look at it a little more closely, on a close call, you try to trim that tree and put it on a five-year trimming cycle. Without that extra attention from you, it defaults to being cut down. And, and I think that's what we're responding to.
Right, and it's kind of like the speed wheel would give, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and the quiet tree gets cut down. Yeah.
So if they're coming through and those are targeted, they're going to remove the trees. But whether or not, you know, again, that's just a part of it, and I agree with you, it's a communication problem. So, so after I leave here, you know, maybe I'll talk to Joe and...
I mean, we, we are getting better at communicating with all of our folks through, you know, Facebook, the township has a Facebook page, and the township has a Twitter feed, and our police department do, and each commissioner has various ways of communicating with folks. If, if, if PICO is able to give some easily digestible standards to folks to understand, they look in their own backyard and realize, like, for instance, my power lines go behind my house, you know, I, I live in a neighborhood where the power lines are behind the houses. So the idea of, oh, the PICO can't touch any trees that are in the backyard, well, of course they can if that's where all the power lines are, if they run in the back. I've got constituents who live on Sunnybrook and Pine Valley, and those, those all run in the back. So that's, those are obviously the trees you guys trim. That kind of information that we can share with folks in advance, especially when we know where you're going to start doing this stuff, is, goes a long way toward preventing the ordeal.
I know that they were doing, you know, but... The phone number on there, this is, discuss this further, call this number and then...
How much time was taking place between...
I actually had a, I actually had a public meeting with PICO and Joe, and probably had six or eight people from PICO and Cooper Town, because we did, did a fair amount of tree removal in Cooper Town. And so I think we did, did a good job in terms of communicating, at least in Cooper Town, your intentions. Not that everybody was pleased. They certainly, a lot of people were not that trees were being taken down. We did have a number of one-on-one meetings with Asplund and, and Joe and, and residents, and we were able to save certain trees here and there. So, but I think, I think the point is well taken. I mean, it's, the sooner you can communicate the complete story to, to residents, the better, the better.
Okay, so for me, I'd like to work with you on it, and maybe we can talk more in detail at the beginning, in good grasp of exactly...
Well, I, obviously you knew when Cooper Town would happen, right? And you got out in plenty of time. You alerted people where they were going to happen. Folks had a chance, whether at, at the end of the day, they could save the tree or not, they at least felt like they had taken a shot at it. But it seems to me that in other parts of the township, people were completely blindsided by this.
Well, I, in Grassland Park, and just to be clear what I was, in Grassland Park, I think there was a meeting with PICO and the township, and Larry Gentile is not here tonight. But I, Joe, I would ask you to look into that because for the park, I mean, we, we were the property owners, so there was a meeting with us before. And my understanding of that meeting was there would be an attempt, there was about six large shade trees that ran along the edge of the park, and there was going to be an attempt made to try to trim them, and they all ended up being taken down. So I, I would ask you to look into that, because my understanding was those, those would be replaced. But the other thing was, in, in my perception from what happened in Grassland Park, the people were notified, but again, they were notified of this concept of, we're going to try to trim the trees. And just like in the park, I mean, you know, I don't have the numbers, but it, from my perception, it was over 90% of them were just taken down.
Were they, did they sign them? Were they signed up? They just, you're saying they just came in and...
No, they were, they were noted, the people were notified. But what I'm saying is...
What I'm saying is, did, did the individual cut, now, for those customers, did the individual property owner sign the form acknowledging that the tree was going to be removed, we were going to cut the tree into three-foot sections, we were going to stack the wood? If they wanted to remove, we would take the wood?
I'm sure that depends on the individual customers. But I'm speaking, the only knowledge I have is from us as, as the township, as the customer. You know, I think the trees were removed as they were, whatever we signed, but the agreement was you were going to try to trim it first. And I think that, that's the issue. That it just seemed like the message from PICO was, we want to try to save all these trees, and then the contractor came in and it was easier to take them down, is the perception problem.
The communication error there is before they did that, they, we should have had some, some problems.
They should have known that they're being removed.
You're, you're talking about the American Legion post, aren't you, Kevin? Yeah, they took about eight trees down there.
Right.
And then...
We would have, there's a form...
Can you hold the mic so we can...
There's a form that the customer would receive, and it would say on the form, the removal of three trees of the property, and they would sign that, saying that they were aware...
But the, yes.
Mr. Rev, I understand what you're saying, it's that maybe there is a difference in communication error.
There was, there was a hope that there was going to be a greater effort to save some of the trees. And then the perception of a lot of the residents was that once the work started, that was lip service. That's, that's what I'm saying to you.
Right, they just came in and wholesale removed eight trees in the park.
If anything, if they removed, it would have been...
And I do have, and I do have concerns that nobody here was at the meeting where you talked, we talked about the township trees like we were the owner of them. But that's, that's a whole nother story. We'll deal with that.
Yeah.
I will certainly...
We'll, we'll get you more involved in that one.
Happens if they don't sign the form. So you're notifying them and saying, we're planning on doing this, and if they don't sign the form...
Ultimately, like you said, put in terms of the tariff, we would come in, I would try to work with them, we'd see if we could make some changes. I think there's been instances, R and M's project, where they tried to move some of the construction around, to calm down people. And actually, we changed the design. But if it was, if it's going to happen in there, it's part of the upgrade, which is, you know, actually a good thing, you know, they're upgrading, they're improving the circuits, so they would take the tree. I can't, I did work with Commissioner Oliva in his area, they had five very large trees that he... Exactly, that, to kind of make some tweaks in the engineering of the design, and Oliva had to...
Well, just from, you know, my information here, would, you're saying that the post there, the commander or somebody from the post signed an okay to take the eight trees, cut them down to the ground. So would you provide that piece of paper that shows what the commander did?
I'm not sure where, where...
Over here at Grassland Field, in the third ward, in Kevin's ward. So you're saying somebody signed the paper saying it was, they approved you taking down the eight trees on Grassland Field.
We should have heard that in that mail.
Well, then you have the paper. You have the paper.
Is that township property or is it...
I believe it's township property.
Township property. So we, that would have been the meeting that we...
That meeting, I will get...
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to...
Yeah, we, what I'll do is I'm going to ask Lori, when Larry gets back, to work with you, to coordinate and find out what the result of that meeting that Larry had with your predecessor, or the interim, your interim predecessor, to go. Because it was our understanding that at least five or eight of the trees were going to be replaced. I mean, you were, you were going to reimburse us, we would replace them with appropriate shade trees outside the wire. Okay.
Bill, can I?
Yes, Steve?
A couple of questions. Joe, thanks for coming, appreciate it. I know I've talked to you on the phone and never met you. Thank you for being here. I have two, two questions. One, I have an email from a constituent who lives on the 200 block of Walnut Hill Lane, who told me that there's, on Greenbrier, the 200 block of Greenbrier, there's a lot of overgrown, overgrowth of vine and bushes around a pole, and she's having problems with the cable. Cable company said they won't touch it because it's PICO's issue. Do you know anything about that?
I'll be here with Mike. I'll be here with you. I mean, we get a lot of complaints like that. We deal with that pretty...
So you take down any vines and stuff that are grown up though?
Yes.
Does that affect them too?
Vines, that's part of our IBM program. And yes, we treat vines every year, okay? All vines off poles. Now, what would happen there is, we wouldn't, we'll cut those vines to kill them and treat them with herbicide, and then they dry up and die. But the thing that gets me a common problem, you see with the constituents, always bear in mind, a lot of those wires aren't ours. So, I mean, of the complaints that I get regularly, that, you know, there's vegetation and trees on, on our, our lines, and a lot of the time, I bet you over 50% of the time, it's not our line.
So another question.
It's whose lines? It's Verizon, it's...
Verizon, Comcast.
You know, we share, the poles with the poles, we share those with Comcast and Verizon. Ours, of course, are on the top. You see the three priors on the top?
Right, right. There's a below that.
And then, there'll be a secondary underneath there, maybe a neutral wire. And then you get lower, and you get some really big, thick-
Cable.
Cable, and that is mostly communication.
Who, who's responsible for?
The, the communication companies.
Well, why won't they touch it on Greenbrier?
Because there's a very well-built cables, and, you know, it takes a lot, they're built well, so.
As we said, he's looking at the tire.
They're not working on it.
Joe, I'll send you the information. My other question is this, do you look at areas, specific areas in Haverford, where, like, spring's coming, so we'll have these severe thunderstorms and high winds and trees come down? And there's certain areas in my ward, and even Dan's ward, that constantly go out.
Uh-huh.
Like, if you take Windsor Park Lane, that area in the first ward, and Dan, I think, where, where do you have an issue?
Darby.
Lane behind.
Yeah, so Josie, that area, yeah, Josie, Barbara.
Yeah, that seems to go down just about every storm, major storm. Do you look at those areas and say, okay, should we be proactive? And I would think you'd want to be proactive, and it's trim over there and cut back, because if a tree does come down, it's, it's a lot more work on your part, isn't it?
It is, and what we do to address that, so we have the, the five-year trim cycle that goes through, and the reliability engineers put together a list for us every year, and we have a mid-cycle program, which, a lot of people are like, whoa, mid-cycle. So, and every two and a half years, we come through with another program on circuits that are identified poor performers, and we do, hit them with another trim, trying to improve the reliability of those areas.
But the work that you did specifically in Cooper Town was because of the fact that there were repeated outages? And as a result of that, that, that is why you made the investment? Is that?
And that's a capital project, yeah.
That's why you make the capital investments?
That's correct.
Yeah.
For durability. I think what you're speaking about is, because of vegetation, you're, you're experiencing outages. So again, if you want to email me those areas, you certainly have to.
Yeah, well, I think it's not only, yeah, it's probably trees, too.
Yeah, that's, yeah, the tree, the overhanging leaves.
Overhanging.
Is that?
And I've seen it, because I recently toured that area over the, the last weekend.
If you see an area that you-
For a trail.
Send me over an email, and I can have them, you know, put your-
Absolutely. We can, we'll set screeners up. We'll, we'll set a screener out, we'll take a look, and say, yeah, we need to do some work there. Other programs that are designed to corrective and mid-cycle, specifically designed to improve reliability on circuits.
One more question, Bill, I'm sorry. I know, is there any way to cut a tree? I mean, I, I know you guys have to do it, and I, I understand that, because we don't want power outages, and we, everybody hates it, especially in the summer when it's so hot. But if you have a tree that's growing, I mean, if you have a tree that's here and the line coming this way, I see this cut that's about an L cut.
A five prune.
Yeah, but you need the bottom, and you cut, sort of like, an L.
Yep.
Backwards L, anyway, what I'm doing now. My question is, is there any way to cut a tree so that it doesn't affect it where it may die?
Well, actually, so our contractors, you know, Asplund, there's a lot, those, the people who run those crews, those supervisors, are certified arborists.
Okay, they are.
Yes, and the cuts we're putting on trees, and those guys are responsible for that, those are approved, they're, they're proper agricultural techniques that are used.
Even the V cuts? Because they look like-
You can trim those back, yeah, those, so the through cuts, the through pruning. Yeah, you bring those back, take those back to the laterals, and those trees-
They do fine.
Yeah.
We need to look at some of the trees, and some trees are really tough. Like, I think this area has a lot of London Blains trees and sycamores, big sycamores. I mean, that's a hardy tree. Those are grown.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Gentlemen?
I just want to call the attention, we have a few of our tree experts out here, Bill, if they want to get in on this.
Well, they can comment next week at the open meeting. But thank you, Joe, thank you, Ernie, for coming.
If you've got, if anybody wants to talk to me or anything, tell me, I'll leave some cards here.
That'd be great.
And I'm, actually, this is a new position for me, actually, Joe, this is probably the date that needed to be addressed, was the work with the Capitol. So they moved me into different groups, so this is going to be my job now.
Okay, great.
I'm working on the Capitol. I'll leave a stack of my cards there, if people want to talk to me, you know, I'd be happy to come in with you.
That's, that's a great thing to do. You may regret it, but thank you.
Yeah, I think, as always, everybody has my number or email. Feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, thank you, Ace.
Amy, you're up on the new format for the 2018 Township Real Estate Tax Sewer and Trash Bill.
By now, everybody should have gotten their 2018 tax bill that had, hopefully, everybody noticed a little bit of a new look to it. Remember, the old one was on old tractor paper, about three and a half by eight, carbonless copy. So we modernized it, and it's in on an eight and a half by eleven sheet, as I'm trying to show you up here. So you have the top part portion, which is the receipted portion, the middle are your instructions, where to mail it, where you can pay in person, where you can contact us for questions. And the bottom is the original bill. We tried to make it simpler, again, remembering the old, you kind of have to look here, and then look over here, and look over there. So it's very easy, just, you see the dates running along the bottom in red, it's paid by March 31st. On this sample one, you just look right above, the amount due is the 160775. If you pay in the face period, which is April 1st through May 31st, look right above, and there's your amount due, and the December 31st if you're in penalty. So, like I said, I hope, oh, I lost it, I hope the public finds this a little bit more user-friendly. Tried to increase the fonts to make it more readable for people. We had some complaints in the past that it was small print and wasn't very modern. So hopefully, this is a step in the right direction, and I encourage the public, if they have any questions or comments, to share them with us, or commissioners to pass it along to us. And I'll just take the opportunity to remind everybody that this is the first full year that you can pay your Township tax bill via credit card on our website, if that's something that's of interest to you. There is a link on our website to do that. You can always come into the Township building and give yourselves an opportunity to come see beautiful new buildings. So you can always come to the Finance Department, pay it there, or you can come to either Citizens Bank branch within the township, or you can mail it to Lockbox. And that is Citizens Bank Lockbox. You get a lot of questions, why am I mailing it? That is where Citizens Bank Lockbox operations are, and that gets it into our account the quickest. So, again, hopefully, everybody enjoys the new modern look, and if you have any questions.
Do you think we'll ever go direct from bank, bank to bank, or not?
We have had some, had some inquiries about emailing bills, and I think that might be the first step we might look into, seeing if that's a possibility. Most of, the vast majority of our property owners have it paid via their mortgage company, which is a bank to bank. We send a data file, they pick off their customers, and then send us monies.
But it would be relatively simple to do an ACH to citizens, right? For, you know, for your bill pay service, for-
Individuals do that all the time, the bank, online banking.
Online banking, yeah, okay.
We get, we get that all, and that's been in place.
All right, thank you, Amy. All right, before we, there's two discussion items before we get there. One, we have the police chief come up and give the crime update.
Just before we get started on that, last night's Eagle celebration was peaceful with township. We closed a couple of roads to allow the revelers to have a good time without having injuries with cars driving down the street. We closed Portland Boulevard for about two hours, and we closed East Eagle Road for about an hour, hour and a half. By 12:30, everybody went home, and whatever they see, so it was, it was a good night in Haverford. So.
Crime report for January 2018, we issued 231 parking tickets, 409 traffic citations, and 200 written warnings. We had burglary at the Greenview Lane, daytime unlocked door, some items were taken from the house. At North Eagle Road, at the 900 North, 1,000 block of North Eagle Road, troop construction, they forced entry into an office and stole a truck. Daytime burglary on Woodland Drive, forced entry, and the suspect is known to victim. We also had a burglary attempt on Old Angus River Avenue, attempted private door, but no entry was made. A sex offense was taken on January the 18th, found a member as a suspect, it's an ongoing investigation. Happened report, we only had three thefts from vehicles in January, and two attempted thefts. So, you know, they moved on, or we're getting better in town, not sure which.
It was cold.
It was cold?
It was cold.
That's a long walk.
K-9 usage, the quarry center for vehicle investigation and arrest, we had a warrant service and a vehicle stop, we had arrested drugs, were seized, open building search, vehicle investigation, we had seven K-9 searches on vehicles, and one AOJ with Radnor Township.
Super, any questions for the chief? Great. Any commissioner committee updates?
I just have something real quick. Dan and I will be hosting a meeting together on February 28th at Manoa Fire Company at 7:00 PM. One of the things that we're going to speak about is the Marple Township development. Dan?
Yeah, the, we attended the Marple Township Planning Commission, where they discussed the new retail development that is going in behind, were adjacent to where they're building the hotel. It is a large development. It will have traffic impact, it will have other impact on the township. And so we'll be talking about that, we'll be, we're trying to get more information as we have it, but it's, it's, it's going to be a significant development. And there will be traffic changes at the Blue Route and throughout that, and we're trying to get as much input as we can.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, Finance Committee will be meeting. We will probably meet by way of a telephone conference to discuss a couple of things that the Township Finance Director and I have discussed in the last two weeks. So I'll report on that after we meet.
And I have, you have two other things. The Property Committee will be meeting to, as we begin to plan what will happen with the Township building at some point. Excuse me?
When's that meeting, Dan?
We haven't said it yet. And the other is that I'm happy to report that after years of chairing the School Board Committee, which was a committee that never had a communication back from the School Board, then with the new School Board, we've had communication. All both committees, although we don't have anything specific to deal with yet, agree that it is just a good idea to have an open line of communication and to just be able to talk with one another. And so I'm pleased to report that that's finally become a reality after all these years, so that that committee can actually, if something comes up on either side, we have people we can talk to.
Good. All right, there's two items listed for discussion. One is the resolution for next week for Nider Hall and Keystone Grant, and then the other one is commercial vehicles. I'll open up, we want to talk about the Historical Society first. Commercial vehicles, you should have received an email with the updated changes from Lori. That is not on the agenda for next week, so.
Correct.
We're willing to discuss it, but it's not on the agenda, it's not coming up for a vote next week or this month. So I'll, the other week on the next week's schedule, there's a bunch of-
Couple days.
...items, so the floor is open, if anybody wants to bring up any of the discussion things during this work session.
We're going to talk about Nider Hall?
I mean, yeah, well, you have a question on the Nider Hall, on the, in their, the resolution 2080?
I thought it was a presentation.
No, no. It's a discussion here for us. The resolution details the amount of work that's being done and the funding. Looks like its total estimate cost to be $129,632, of which the Board of Commissioners will provide a 50/50 match up to the total amount of $64,816 from the sale of the Eagle Road property.
Though, would you allow me to hand these out, so informational?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Woody.
So, Mr. President, I, I was one of several commissioners who went to Nider Hall in the fall of 2017 and saw firsthand the current state of things there, and got a, we were the beneficiaries of a lengthy discussion about the work they want to do. And the number they're talking about, matching money from our, you know, half of that money coming from our sale of the property, the Eagle Road, makes perfect sense to me. Certainly doesn't seem to be a, it seems to be a very reasonable number in light of the significance of the work that needs to be done, all the while trying to preserve as much as you can of a historic asset.
It is the Township Museum as well, so there's some humidifier issues that have to be done in order to preserve the documents and the artifacts through there, so.
Yeah, and this is just-
I kind of agree, it's money well spent, but.
Yeah, this is just the start of it. I mean, there's really extraordinary assets and treasures there that are irreplaceable. And I know it's a longer-term project for us to evaluate the Historical Society's longer-term needs, try to figure out how to incorporate that into our budget. And I think that is a very useful and valuable exercise for us to do, because they have some very extraordinary things there that a lot of us just don't know about.
Right. Any other comments on that issue? Any comments on any other issue for next week? There's a fee schedule, destruction is a house.
The Boards and Commissions, Bill, that ordinance is, Lori just said, is a first reading, second reading?
That, that'll be a first, we have to amend that. We had, I can have Kelly actually discuss it, we had to review, Lori had sent a memo out about some of the changes, whether we were precluded to doing things, and what numbers we could do. And our solicitor reviewed that. Now, Kelly, you want to give us the update on that, or?
Because you're a Home Rule Charter, you're not necessarily limited by the first-
Can you speak into the microphone?
Because we're a Home Rule Charter, sorry, you're not necessarily limited by the first-class Township Code when we're talking strictly advisory committees and rules that aren't of general applicability. So the committees that we just talked about, like shade tree, ice rink-
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, and Health are all, the Board would have the discretion to increase, decrease, whatever they would like to the number, the terms, the members, maybe. When we're talking more about administrative committees or committee, or boards that are formed by the municipalities' planning code, the Board doesn't have the discretion to change those numbers. Well, I think there was some talk about maybe adding alternates to the zoning board.
You, you did find it was, in, in the course of the investigation, it was found that we could appoint alternates to the zoning board.
Between one and three.
Between one and three members. That would be, well, they would, they would have to sit for the hearings, they would be facilitated, what other municipalities evidently do, and what's permitted by the first class, First Class Township Act, is that provides them with a quorum when they do not have all their members there. So the alternates have to attend the meetings, have to listen to testimony, they don't vote unless an alternate's needed for a voting session. So they would provide an alternate member, they would also be able to provide a quorum when there's meetings there, when the members can't, of the normal board that's appointed can't be there. So they would be appointed one, either one to three alternates, and so, and an alter would come into play, let's say, somebody was absent, there were only four members, and you had a two-two vote, and you had, you're under a time constraint, the alternates then allow you to have an odd number so you can break there. So that's what's, that's what's in the first-class township. We would need to do it, we would need to do it under a separate ordinance, right? And then it would go, that's what you request it up to county planning, I guess?
Municipalities' planning code, and then it's the, you'd be amending your administrative code if you were adding the alternate members to the zoning hearing board, but because your zoning code actually incorporates the administrative code, that you'd have to go through a zoning change. So you'd have to go, put it to Township Planning, and then to County Planning.
And again, that was found in the course of the investigation. I'm not saying we have to do that. It's an option, that's all.
But I mean, had we ever, of all the Boards and Commissions we talked about increasing back in January and December, when we went through our, you know, our interviews and all that, and then our, our appointments in January, we didn't talk about the zoning board, did we?
No.
No, this, this came up purely by our solicitor, looking at what Boards and-
Do we, does it also, does that apply to the Planning Commission as well?
No.
I don't think it did.
No, I don't think the Planning Commission has, I'd have to double check, I don't think it has alternates. I'd have to check the Municipalities' planning code, but that would be one of the other boards that you're not allowed to increase or decrease at your leisure.
Right, that's my question. So the Planning Commission and the zoning board, those are, those are the boards that are, we don't have the same discretion we have.
Correct.
But were the Planning Committee, were either of those boards, boards we were even considering?
No.
No.
Mr. Morawa?
And usually, if someone can't make it, they usually read the notes of testimony, and if the attorneys agree to it, they read the notes of testimony. So it's never really been an issue.
No, and, and nobody ever said it was, it just-
No, I know.
This came up in the course of their investigation, that's all.
I'm just saying, I don't, I don't know if we need to do that.
Actually, the only time I ever heard it as an issue was 12 years ago, when we're The only time I ever heard it as an issue was 12 years ago, when they were trying to, when four of us were new on the board, and they were trying to get somebody appointed, and Commissioner Moran was talking about.
That's not good.
Dogs and cats living together and all sorts of terrible things would happen if we didn't appoint somebody to the board, yeah. But I, other than that, yeah, other than that silly Cassandra stuff that night, I've never heard of an issue, you know, where these guys, you know, where we ended up having a problem because there wasn't a quorum, or time went by, so.
Bill, my question was, the Grange, we have three people who come before us, and they get one-year appointments, and I myself felt that they should be four-year appointments. And what, is there any change on that, or what?
We talked about that, doing that as well.
We're gonna do three, weren't we gonna do three-year stagger terms, so one year, everybody?
Right.
Just come up once a year for three years?
Yeah, I think we, I think it was changed to three, but.
Three years, okay.
There's another board, same thing, right?
No, what we.
So, next year, it'll be up for three-year term, right? Is that right?
Well, you do one for one year, one for two years, and one for three years, and then the next year, the one-year person cycles off, and they get on a three-year, and the next year, the two-person year gets, and then eventually, you have it.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can have them look at it, because in the first, I was reading, after Kelly informed me, I looked at the First Class Township Act, and you start off, they started off three, four, and five, so you don't rotate it off, so it's, you can do one, two, three, but the way they do it when you.
It's five-year terms?
Well, and then, then it becomes, then you do, they cycle off every year, and then you do threes, and so, it's, depends on how you do it, you just, what you wanna do is avoid.
Oh, three, four, and five, I would suggest that since every, since we only have four year terms, and the zoning board is done by other law, I think.
Oh, no, we're talking about the Grange here.
And then do one for two, one for three, one for four.
Sure, yeah, you could do that. For an advisory board like the Grange, I think you could do that, right? That's well within our discretion, I think zoning and planning, you can't do that.
Right, but all the, all the boards that we voted on were all advisory.
Right.
So, so there's no, I don't think there's any issue with our, with that ordinance.
Right, and we'd still be on track to, if, so the public knows, if, we'd still be on track if it's passed next week, to then make additional appointments in March.
Correct.
We could make appointments, they wouldn't be effective till after that, because it has to wait 30 days to go into effect, and it won't be 30 days from our February meeting until the March meeting.
It said March.
Or even from March to April, I don't think.
March, April, but we, right, we could start the planning process.
We could start the process.
What would you advertise then, assuming it got through, it passed twice, you know, two readings?
We would advertise as quickly as possible, then.
Yeah.
For the openings.
Sure. All right, are there any other questions or discussion items for any of the other resolutions that are on next week's agenda? Any appointments?
Just the fee schedule, was there any?
It's in there.
Ms. Cuthbertson, any, any changes of significance in the fee schedule?
No, we did solicit all the departments, and only a few submitted, I think, several of the departments submitted change last go-around. The police exam went up a little bit due to the costs incurred in giving that exam, the new chicken license is on there.
That's a substantial change, right?
And the last one was, we wanted to specify when EMS vehicles and medical assistance needed specialness.
Got it.
You only saw one strikeout, it was a $35 to $45 change.
The police exam.
That's the police.
Right, and that's the only major, and then the addition of the other ones. Okay. Any other questions?
Is that a typo, it says $60 for backyard chicken license, but we actually, that was, that was supposed to be $6,000 for the initial license.
There you go, I agree, I heard 6,000.
Now that everybody agreed to, I mean, that's obviously a typo.
I absolutely heard that. Larry's right, 6,000, typo there.
Yeah, it certainly will be imposed on the sixth ward chair.
That was, that was, that was per chicken, too, right?
That's per chicken.
That'd be per egg.
Ooh. Any, any other items that are questions before we seek to adjourn for next week?
Bill, can I just say, when Chief Viola was up here speaking about the reports and all, I just wanted him to know that last night, a couple of young fellows, believe it or not, over in Brookline, came to me today and said, "What a great job the police did on Brookline Boulevard," and how friendly they were, and how cooperative everything was, because there wasn't anything down in Brookline, no rest, everybody was cordial to each other, and it was a good scene. And also, I had, I had people in the Wawa this morning at 5:30 in the morning, telling